Ma'am, correct with you? You're an honor of Colin Rowe, please.
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins? Mr. Corbin? Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sandy?
Present.
I knew, you know, when I was teaching, we always had one student that would come in late. So this is our late one. Oliver, good to see you.
When I was a student, I was always the one who was late.
Ah, all right.
Uh, Mr. Shine? Uh, Mr. Corbin is out of town today and he will not be present at today's meeting.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Thompson, thank you very much. Uh, I'll entertain a motion at this time for the approval of the minutes of the Administrative Caucus on Monday, June 23rd. City Council meeting Tuesday, June 24th. It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. I'm sorry, it's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins and was it second by Sam?
Right here.
Right, right. It was second by right here, all right? Jeff Everson. All in favor? Let's vote on it and let's see if you have any questions in the comments. We'll accept that now. Now let's vote. Minutes approved with a six oh vote, one out of the, out of town, really. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Shine, members of the council. Uh, we're going to start today's mayoral communication. I'm gonna take some directions from, uh, Stephen Jackson and the mayor's office. I'm sorry, there she is, looking, uh, like a student down there herself, Mr. Shine. I did not see her amongst the, uh, the interns. Uh, Chief of Staff Bernadine Anderson.
She's looking so young, this man.
Absolutely. She will give us some direction in terms of, uh, our interns this year. We want to have the opportunity to be able to, uh, introduce them to each of the members of the council, uh, and have them very briefly share a little bit about who they are, where they are from, where they attend school, what their respective majors are.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council and, uh, mayor and administrative staff. There's no one better to tell you about the internship program than our Honorable Cedric Glover, Mayor. Uh, I am honored that he would ask us to come forward. We're so pleased and exhilarated in our department to have Shreveport's finest, the brightest, and the best in our internship program. They are allowed to come in on a competitive basis. They apply. They work seven weeks in various departments throughout the city of Shreveport. As you meet them, you will find that they are very, very talented young people. And yes, as we implement the program, we want you to know that we're very selfish, that we want to prepare these young people to come back, to live, to work, and have their livelihoods and careers in Shreveport. We don't want to prepare them to go away. So it is my honor, each will come up to present the interns and the mayor's internship program for 2014. We're also pleased to announce that there are 20 interns, and this is the largest class of interns ever. They will come forward and let you know who they are, their major, their classification, their current location, and their schooling, and the department that they're working in.
Good afternoon. My name is Victoria Davis. I'm currently a senior at Grand Ole State University.
Wait just a minute. Excuse me, ma'am. I had to do that. I'm sorry, but I had to do that.
Yeah, I'm currently a senior at Grand Ole State University, majoring in criminal justice. Uh, I currently work for the Shreveport Police Department, and I plan to be a police department, I plan to work with the Shreveport Police Department when I graduate from Grand Ole State University.
Thank you, all right. All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Rossum. I'm a junior at Louisiana Tech University, and, uh, my major is finance, and I was placed in the Shreveport Airport Authority Department.
All right, thank you.
For the Bulldogs.
Good afternoon, I'm Vinnie Del Mundo. I'm a senior at Baylor University. I study political science and business administration. Uh, currently, I'm over at the, uh, City of Shreveport Courthouse, and I hope to be an attorney one day and hopefully come back here to Shreveport.
All right. Sam.
Hello, my name is Latoya Wilson. I attend the University of Texas at Tyler. I'm a graduate student. My major is human resources, and I am placed in the human resources department.
All right, okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Loisha Jacobs. First, I want to say I'm blessed to be here. Um, I attend the University of Louisiana at Lafayette. They are major in finance, and, um, I'm a senior here. I'm fortunate enough to work with, in the mayor's office, with Ms. Chirica Mainly, working, uh, with some finance stuff, the city budget, all that, so it's nice to be here.
All right, hey.
I'm Tiara Sanders, and I attend LSUS, and I'm a junior, and I study software development, and I'm working in the IT department.
Tigerland, another tiger.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Leetha Hernandez. I am a junior at the University of New Orleans, and I'm studying international studies with a concentration in diplomacy and international organizations, so I'm going to be a diplomat. And, um, I am placed in the sportran department.
Great, all right.
Good morning, uh, good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Jen. I am a rising senior at Mary Bolden Uni- College. Uh, my major is applied mathematics, and I am placed in the, in the Shreveport Department of Water and Sewage.
All right. Come back to Shreveport and teach now.
Good afternoon. My name's Tim Wilson. I'm a ULM graduate. I finished in risk management and insurance, and I'm currently working with SPAR on budget.
All right, yeah.
Hi, my name is Katie Hancock, and I'm a senior at, uh, St. Aaron College, and I'm majoring in new media communication, and I am working, working on marketing for SPAR.
All right.
Good afternoon. I'm Remy Hutton. I'm a sophomore at Louisiana State University in Baton Rouge. I have a major in kinesiology with the concentration in occupational therapy, and I'm working in the SPAR department and a community center, um, specialized in therapeutic recreation.
All right.
Good afternoon. My name is Chaditha Ron. I am a sophomore at St. Aaron College. My major is business accounting, and I work in community development under the, under the direction of Ms. Bunny Moore.
All right.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Wright, a junior psychology major at Southern University and Aynam College, and my department is public works.
Did you say Southern University?
Yes.
No.
Damn, damn. Y'all got one in at least.
I'd like the St. Aaron kids to go without them.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jasmine Cooper, and I'm a sophomore at Southern University.
Oh, Sam, come on.
And my major is political science, and I'm currently at the Shreveport City Court, and my future plans are to also become an attorney.
All right, damn, damn.
Sound like firecrackers, Sam, just kind of light.
I'm Valencia Richardson. I go to Louisiana State University in Baton Rouge, and I am a sophomore, majoring in mass communication with a concentration in political communication, with a minor in Spanish, and I work in the Department of Community Development.
All right, great.
Good afternoon. My name is Winifred Sanders. I'm a senior at Louisiana Tech University, majoring in political science with a concentration in pre-law and a minor in journalism, and I'm working in the mayor's office.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Trey Van Cooper, and I attend Northwestern. I'm a senior, and I major in fine, fine arts and graphic. Yeah. Over community development and the mayor's office.
All right, thank you, all right. NSU.
Good afternoon, councilmen members. My name is Jared Lofton. I'm, uh, currently classified as a junior, studying political science at LSUS, and, uh, I plan on getting off into national and local politics, so I'm, um, just stationed at the courthouse.
All right.
We'd like to thank the department heads and the supervisors who are investing their time into our young people. They are required to do weekly reports so that we can keep abreast of their activities. I'd also like to thank in the mayor's office, the program administrators, who take the students and spend one-on-one time with them and make sure that they're growing in the ways that we direct, and they are Mr. Dale Sibley, Ms. Chirica Fields, Ms. Dusty Colquit, Mr. Rod Richardson, and Mr. Stephen Jackson. Again, Mayor Glover, thank you for your vision to make sure that we continue to enrich our community by growing our own.
What, you just, you left out one thing. Now, you gotta thank the council members for appropriating the money. That's the bottom line.
That, that was gonna be my thank you.
Oh, okay then, okay, okay.
And now turn it over to the Honorable Mayor Glover.
Wait, wait, don't say that, don't say that.
They're taking lessons in there to figure out how this operates.
There you go, all right, all right.
Thank you, uh, Bernadine, and, and thank you to all of these, uh, interns for, uh, accepting the challenge of coming and being a part of this, uh, this great effort. Uh, and as you stated, Mr. Chairman, uh, without, uh, the support of this council and the previous councils, uh, this would not be possible, so I certainly want to, uh, to, to thank you all as well, uh, for your willingness to, uh, to, to help us put this effort forward. Uh, as I've said to you all before, and as I've, as I've said to the, the interns themselves, and as I've said to Dale and Bernadine and all the various department heads in helping them to understand why it is that this is something that we feel it's important to do. Uh, it's because, uh, I believe it's, it's very important, uh, to a place like the city of Shreveport, uh, provide, uh, a venue, an opportunity, a set of circumstances where we can help to grow and cultivate, uh, our own leaders. Uh, and I think the, the best way to be able to do that is to be able to provide them an opportunity to come in and actually see from the inside, uh, some aspects of the operations of what it means to, to, to lead and run and manage a city. Uh, and as I shared with them earlier, uh, before we came down, uh, that it's my great hope, uh, that, uh, that many of them, uh, will take these experiences and, and use them, uh, as a springboard to be able to go on, uh, to, uh, pursue the dreams, the goals, the aspirations that they have. Uh, and then I hope, uh, that, uh, that that springboard, um, might be one that ultimately lands in here, uh, if not directly working for the city of Shreveport, because, uh, we know that we've got, uh, folks who are within these various departments, who are, uh, getting on up in years, uh, and we need to have good experience, committed, dedicated, uh, people coming behind them, uh, to take their places. But then, even outside of local government, uh, there are positions within the private sector, within the nonprofit sector, within the political community, uh, that will need, uh, great leaders as well, and we hope that, uh, that they will also come, uh, and, and be open to accepting those challenges and those responsibilities, and that these experiences will somehow, uh, have helped to, to make them, uh, either a little bit more prepared, uh, or to actually spark an interest, uh, that may not have been there before. And so, uh, we thank you all again, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. We thank all the various department heads who have been a part, uh, of, of this effort this year and in previous years, uh, and we look forward to seeing these young folks go off as their predecessors have, uh, in doing great, wonderful, and outstanding things, uh, here at home, uh, across the state of Louisiana, across the country, and in some instances even potentially across the world. Uh, now, having said that, Mr. Chairman, uh, I got a bit of information that I even was not aware of, having, uh, make sure that we, we had a, an outstanding group of individuals who were here, and they're all very impressive, uh, in their own regard, but there's one, uh, note that I, I think is worthy of, uh, particular note, uh, and, and mention, uh, is that we have one of our interns here, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, who is only 15 years old.
Would you please stand?
No, 15.
Oh, no, hey.
Uh, with a 4.0.
That's the mathematical, where? Applied mathematics. Right.
So she's helping us in billing over in, uh, Water and Sewage, is that right?
Come back to Caddo and teach now.
And, and at 15, Mr. Shine, members of the council, is a, a junior, uh, and will be a senior next year.
Wow.
So, uh, at the age of 16, well before the age of 17.
Cute.
She will be a college graduate. I'm sure at that point will be on to grad school, uh, and other heights, uh, beyond, and, and we are certainly impressed to have, uh, I think what is, uh, the most junior member of our, uh, intern class, and this, the, uh, the eighth year that we've had this effort.
At, at 15, I was just trying to get out of junior high school, and look it up, will you? Man, that's something else.
Excellent. So, again, I want to ask you all to join me in giving them a round of applause. And, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we, we, I know we have at least two family, uh, members who were here, uh, because I, I, I know for a fact, uh, who, who their particular children are.
They had them to stand.
And so we, we want to ask, uh, any of the family members' parents, uh, at this point, to stand so that we can recognize them as well.
Oh, yeah.
We, we all know our, our own Fred Sanders and his wonderful daughter, Winifred, who is, uh, that senior at Louisiana Tech. Uh, the, the very, uh, young and attractive young lady sitting behind him, uh, happens to be Ms. Mia Brooks, uh, what's the, what's the, Ms. Mia Brooks Cooper. Uh, she is a, uh, graduate of the Caddo Parish Magnet High School, uh, happens to be my classmate, uh, and one of those folks who, if I hadn't had the privilege of, uh, peeking over, uh, from my desk, uh, probably never would've made it out of Magnet, Mr. Shine.
Right, well, that's good. You need somebody like that, not your Dale.
And, uh, Mr. Shine, she is, uh, we, we know that Fred is, uh, assistant to the chief in the Shreveport Fire Department. Um, this Cooper, Brooks Cooper is, uh, like you, Mr. Shine, and, and you as well, uh, Mrs. McCullough, a, uh, teacher in the Caddo Parish school system.
All right.
And, uh, for a very long time was at the Atkins Elementary School, and as I, I recently came to understand, will be joining another Magnet alum, uh, at Turner Elementary and Middle School, uh, as an assistant principal this coming school year, so we thank them for coming out today and being a part of our effort as well. Uh, also, Mr. Shine, council members, want to, uh, to make you all aware, uh, that, uh, on a week from yesterday, uh, July the 14th, you all should have in front of you a little card that we are sharing these with the media and helping to, uh, to get the word out. Uh, we were fortunate enough, uh, several, uh, I guess about a year or so ago, April of last year, to get the news that City of Shreveport had been selected by the Environmental Protection Agency to receive a grant for, I believe, about $300-plus thousand dollars, uh, to be able to do, uh, planning and visioning, uh, for the cross-bayou area, uh, by identifying an area that if it were to be developed would necessitate a substantial investment of brownfield dollars, and identifying a potential project. Uh, this area is one, uh, that is specifically referenced, uh, as a great area of opportunity in our Shreveport Caddo 2030 Master Plan. Uh, it's one dating back 20 years to my time on the Shreveport City Council that we talked about being an area that has a great deal of potential for development, uh, and is the area of cross-bayou that essentially runs from North Common, uh, back east towards the cross-bayou's confluence, uh, with the Red River. Uh, we have a team of, uh, planning and visiting professionals who have been selected, uh, being paid for by this particular grant. Uh, the first visiting session for this effort will be, uh, next Monday, the 14th, uh, from 1:30 PM to 5:00 PM. Uh, it's open to the public. It'll be at the, uh, Red River Room at the Convention Center, so we want to encourage folks, uh, to come out and engage and participate, uh, and share, and certainly council members, if any of you all have time, uh, we would encourage you all to come out and be a part of that effort as well. Uh, and certainly it lies in Mr. Everson's district, so hopefully his work schedule will allow him to be there. And, uh, uh, there's already a, um, a webpage, uh, that is up and operating, uh, so you'll be able to get some additional information in terms of what it's about. I believe that area represents, uh, an opportunity for us to be able to see some outstanding things that could happen, uh, from a residential development, from a recreational development, and from a retail development, uh, as we envision what the, uh, future city of Shreveport will look like, uh, as these young folks, uh, in another five, 10, and 15 years, step into these various positions as council members, department heads, uh, mayors, and, and what have you. So, uh, encourage you all to come out and be a part of that.
Mayor, is that picture on the card, is that the one that came up missing that I saw in the paper a week or so ago, or is that a different one?
What's, what, what's missing?
The sign, historic site.
Uh, no, I think the, the sign that, that's referenced that came up missing is one of the much larger, heavier, um, there's not much, I, I think those signs, when they end up, uh, missing, uh, end up with people trying to take them to the scrapyard.
Wow.
There's not much, uh, there's not much scrap value, uh, in this sign that you see here that's pictured. So I, I think the one that you're talking about would be one of the heavier, larger brass, I believe may be a, a big part of the metal composition of those signs, and they're usually stolen with the intention of, of trying to take them to the scrapyard. That's why we often end up having great luck in recovering those, because when they show up, folks who manage the scrapyards are obligated by law to, to, to make us aware of. Exactly. Uh, but what you see there, um, uh, is the old, uh, McNeil Street Pumping Station that's to the left, uh, and you see a view of the, uh, Atrus Bridge. Am I using that reference correctly? Lane, is Lane still here? Atrus Bridge, uh, is what you see there to the right. Um, and, uh, I tell you one of the most, um, inspiring perspectives to see this area from in terms of having a appreciation for its potential is the riverboat cruise, uh, that you can catch from in front of Sapport that takes you northward up the Red River, and then that, uh, veers over into the cross-bayou area. It lets you see exactly its proximity to the Convention Center, to the Hilton Hotel. Uh, there's even a rail line that runs through it that, that serves exclusively the general scrapyard there, that if it ever ends up being repurposed, could be a great, uh, people mover in terms of taking that people from that area, uh, behind the Convention Center, uh, along the Hilton Hotel, across Market and Spring Street, and then it would run parallel to Commerce Street, uh, where you would have the Red River District and all the other, uh, things that are there. The only thing it does right now is it moves scrap from the scrapyard over to the rail yard, that's just to the, uh, the south of downtown. Uh, but, great opportunity to come out and, uh, and be able to see exactly what some of our future potential opportunity may be. Uh, the good news is, uh, from a development standpoint, uh, is that the vast majority of the land that is there, uh, is publicly owned with the exception of the general scrapyard. Uh, and, uh, those folks have entertained the notion over the years about the possibility of relocating that operation, uh, or outright selling, potentially, uh, if the, uh, circumstances ever, uh, ended up being right, and, uh, we also know that there would be considerable funds potentially available, which is what this represents a start of, uh, from a brownfield rehabilitation standpoint, if we were ever able to ultimately consolidate and collect it all into one solid mass of land. Uh, second to last thing, before I have a chance to be able to, to welcome some folks who I'm certainly delighted and glad that, that are here with us today, is that I want to take an opportunity to express great thanks and appreciation, uh, to George Servin, uh, to Jan Elkins, uh, and to all of the folks who are with KTBS Television and KPMJ and all of the other, uh, various affiliates that are located with that, uh, the Ray Family, ownership of KTBS, uh, for what I believe is the fifth year, uh, of their cosponsorship with the city of Shreveport, uh, for our annual Fourth of July, uh, celebration on the Shreveport Riverfront. Uh, we sponsored that effort for a very long time with another local media partner. Uh, unfortunately, decided to, uh, to discontinue the relationship, and we were, you know, somewhat distraught as to whether or not we would be able to carry on, uh, an appropriate Fourth of July celebration, as John Adams recommended, uh, and, and, uh, challenged us all to do to, uh, celebrate, uh, with, um, a great flag, uh, in the coming years. Thankfully, uh, George Servin and the folks at KTBS stepped up, uh, partnered with the city of Shreveport. They brought on Parish of Caddo, I believe, uh, Bozier City, and maybe Bozier Parish have also, uh, been a part and a partner of this effort as well. I know that the Red River Waterway Commission, uh, has also taken on the, uh, the mantle, Ken Ivy, uh, with the Flowing America has been a part of it as well, uh, but it has been, uh, a bigger and better and more outstanding effort, uh, in every successive year. Uh, the one thing that will be great about next year is that there will be more than a million dollars in new improvements that will be a part, uh, of that Riverview Park area that will make it an even, uh, better experience, and so we're looking forward to that, but certainly could not argue with an outstanding effort this year, great music, great fireworks, uh, and a great experience for all who had a chance to come down and be a part of it. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm gonna step up and walk around for this particular portion of communications. I want to ask Pastor Lamar Holden and Ms. Melhumpfrey and Mrs. Minnie Pharoah to please come up and join me. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, um, there has been, and appropriately so, uh, substantial, uh, focus, and Councilwoman McCullough, please, if you are so inclined, please come join me, because this is your district. Um, there has been considerable focus, uh, in recent weeks, uh, to the issue of the Harrelson landfill, uh, up in the Cooper Road MLK community. Um, much of that attention and focus, uh, has come about, uh, as a result of the fact that, uh, the landfill has caught and been on fire, uh, intermittently, uh, for the last several years. Uh, and so, uh, with the presence of the smoke, uh, there has been a great deal of attention, uh, that has been drawn to the issue, uh, and thankfully, uh, there are lots of folks who have now gotten involved and decided that this is something that is an imperative, uh, and that help, that support, that assistance, that engagement is certainly welcomed and appreciated. Uh, but, uh, I think it's also important to note, uh, that this is an issue, uh, that has a history that dates back over 30 years. Uh, in fact, uh, Mr. Shine, it would've been, I believe, the second city council, 1983, that would've been on board, uh, when this issue, uh, first, uh, ended up hitting the, um, uh, the, the radar screen in terms of the city of Shreveport. Uh, it was in 1994, when I was a member of the council, uh, when, um, it took another turn with regard to an effort, uh, to gain an acknowledgement of its zoning status. That was an effort that ended up being overturned by this council, but that decision was overturned, uh, by district court. Uh, as you go forward into, uh, the 2000s, uh, the situation became, uh, even worse as it began to expand, uh, I guess to use a medical term, it metastasized, uh, having been, uh, approved for 29 acres. It doubled in size and, and then seemingly doubled again, uh, and there were a group of citizens from the Martin of the King area, uh, who stepped up and said, "This is wrong, uh, and it needs to stop." Uh, and they spoke out, uh, and they spoke out quite loudly, uh, from the ministerial community. Uh, the individual who stepped up, uh, and was the most engaged, uh, and was the most articulate, uh, and the most persistent is Mr. Reverend and Pastor Lamar Holden. Uh, Pastor Holden appeared in numerous venues, including the newspapers, Shreveport City Council chambers, uh, the confines of his church and others, uh, the public venues within the neighborhood, where there were neighborhood gatherings, uh, and there were even occasions where he took to standing on the street corner, intersection of Russell Road and MLK Drive with others, uh, exhorting them to raise their level of awareness and concern about what was happening with the Harrelson landfill. And so in recognition of his outstanding courage and his commitment and his willingness to step up, uh, and, in the minds of some, make himself a target, it is my great honor and privilege to present to the Reverend Lamar Holden this Mayor's Award of Excellence. And it reads, "The Mayor's Award of Excellence in recognition for the tireless, selfless, and determined effort you've made over the years to fight for the mental, physical, and environmental health of the Martin of the King Junior community and the-" environmental health of the Martin of the King Junior Community and the entire city of Shreveport, awarded in Shreveport, Louisiana, this eighth day of July, 2014."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this award, but since I'm a member of the Coalition for Social Justice, I'm the chaplain of that organization, and because of the organization, when I decided to take up the fight, they told me that they would be in my corner. Mr. Levison, he's here today, and because of that, but let me say this as I go to my seat. I left Spokane, Washington, never had seen my dad until 1947. I came to stay one year, wound up seeing a young lady that I liked at that time and kept asking my mother, "Could I stay here?" That's why I came to Louisiana, but I was really, uh, here in Spokane, Washington, but let me say this. That flag, didn't you play it a while ago? I served, I raised my hand and had a Texas tree that if I was, that I would defend the Constitution of the United States or hit me, God, if I was cut by any foreign enemy, I would only give right to name, see, and I'm a day to break. We went over as America, gyroscope landed in Germany, served my time in Munich, Schunheisen, Hornfeld, put a bridge across the Rhine River, 1957, came back to this city. This city has a great potential. That's not Martin of the King problem, that's Shreveport problem.
Right.
And we need to rise up above community and say, "This is our problem, we're gonna stop it." We shouldn't have no disparity in the law. If the law said close it, and I know Mag Glover been trying to fight it, you guys ought to say, "No, enough is enough." I would be at that farm tonight to tell DEQ the same thing. I've been going in and out of Baton Rouge. If it's wrong in my sermon, what I preach is just a stop sign. If you find out it's wrong, stop it.
Right.
Don't say, "We doing better, we can do better." No, if it's wrong, stop it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I learned a long time ago that if you really want to see some action, you really want to see a situation move, you have a man of God like Pastor Holden involved, but then also, if you really want to see folks jump, if you really want to see people come to attention, if you really want to see some real commitment, drive, and follow-through, you've got to get some women involved. And there are no two better examples of that than these two individuals that we are about to recognize now. Now, I have often said that, uh, the words of Hillary Clinton, uh, at least in my own life, are absolutely true, when she says that it takes a village, uh, to raise a child. Without question, these two ladies are a part of that collective village, uh, that helped to raise me, uh, and so many others within the Cooper Road community. Not only did they help to raise me, they also challenged me, because you couldn't talk one way and then walk another with them. They held you to account. They wanted to make sure that your actions lined up with your rhetoric. And they didn't just tell you that, they showed you by how they lived their own lives. One of the things that was necessary in order to be able to try and advance this effort was to pursue course of action against the very folks that, uh, are coming to address the community tonight, the Department of Environmental Equality, uh, the very folks who have permitted this operation to be an operation for these two-plus decades. Now, we went lots of different ways about trying to take on this matter. These ladies took it on directly through the courts, did so with the support of the Tulane Environmental Law Clinic. They came and traveled to Shreveport back in 2006, 2007, 2008, 2007 and 2008 timeframe, and they expressed their interest in helping to assist and support the community, uh, in terms of addressing this matter. They recognized it and sought for the problem that it is. But what they needed were some folks who were willing to step up and sign on as plaintiffs. Now, lots of people will come and they'll attend meetings and, and what have you, but when you ask someone to put their name on a dotted line, put a target on their chest, as Pastor Holden and these two ladies have done, to publicly identify themselves as being the voice, the presence, the virtual opposition to this effort, that takes on a different tenor. These two ladies were willing to do that. They became the two plaintiffs and the citizens of the Cooper Road MLK community versus the Louisiana Department of Environmental Equality. Not only did they end up pursuing that litigation, uh, having to travel, since the court of jurisdiction was in Baton Rouge, uh, the 19th JDC, they traveled at their own expense. When the case was appealed, they traveled again at their own expense. They also, uh, in an effort to better, uh, educate and empower themselves and the community, uh, about issues of environmental justice, they also financed, at their own expense, the cost of traveling to various seminars and programs and sessions around the state and around the region, all in an effort to be able to better position them to effectively advocate against this facility being located and operating within their neighborhood. As I said earlier this morning, in talking to the, uh, leadership Shreveport Boja class, it was one thing to have, you know, great sports teams and great convention centers and downtowns and what have you, but the true measure of a city is determined by the quality of life that people experience on the block where they live. If that's not a good place for them to be, all the rest matters very little. These are women who have fought, just like Pastor Holden, for their block, for their street, for their neighborhood, for their community, and by extension ultimately, for their city. And so, it's with great honor and great humbleness that I'm privileged to be able to present, first to Miss Thelma Humphrey, this Mayor's Award of Excellence for your tireless service and dedication on behalf of the citizens of the Cooper Road community. Thank you so much for all that you've done and all that you are doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Next. Mayor, why don't you let her say hello before she leaves?
Absolutely, we're gonna, we're gonna act them both, Mr. Shine. Absolutely, we're not letting her go. No, 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 no.
All right.
And now, we're gonna make the presentations first.
There you go.
Absolutely, and now, next to Ms. Minnie Pharo. Thank you so much for your willingness, your sacrifice, and your service as well.
All right.
Now, ladies, please, absolutely.
Good afternoon, I just want to say, thanks to you all, thanks to the mayor. Most of all, Ms. Irma Rogers was our leader of going to Baton Rouge to Mac when we had to go, and thank you.
All right. God bless you.
I want to say, good evening to the council and to thank our mayor for all that he has done to make all of this possible, but I want to say to the council and to all of those persons who are here, is that if you go down Highway I-220, when you look, um, there, you will see the Harrelson Dump. It is six stories tall, like a large building. I-49 is gonna come that way. Surely you would not want a sign that says on Harrelson's Dump, "The largest dump in the United States of the, of America," where visitors are coming, thinking that this is such a fine city, because it is, it's a fine city. But, if that's going to be the opening of coming into this fine city, certainly, first impressions are last impressions. I say to each one of you, back us, get this thing closed down, so that again, we can say that Shreveport is a great city, walking into its destiny. Thank you.
All right. We will be there tonight.
Thank you, Pastor Holden. Thank you, Mrs. Humphrey. Thank you, Mrs. Pharo. And with that, I want to ask Councilwoman, as their representative, if she would have any words to add as well.
Yes, I'd like to give a special thanks to the MLK CDC under the direction of Ms. Irma Rogers, as well as, uh, Ms. Humphrey and, uh, Ms. Minnie Pharo. Ms. Minnie Pharo has been with me since I've been in the world of politics, and she's kept me on course. Again, Reverend Holden, I want to say a special thanks to you as well, and it is because of citizens like this that make me, uh, helped me to become the politician that I am today. Again, thank you.
In, in closing, Mr. Shine, I want to, uh, and members of the council, I want to join them in expressing thanks and appreciation, uh, to Irma Rogers as head of the Martin of the King Community Development Corporation. Uh, I'm also very thankful that in conjunction with the, uh, councilwoman, uh, Mrs. Humphrey and Mrs. Pharo, uh, along with Mr. Benny Doty of the Martin of the King Neighborhood Association, uh, they are beginning the process of also focusing, uh, on what are the health implications of this situation. You all, two weeks ago, had a chance to hear, uh, from Mrs. Ely, uh, and several other members of the neighborhood who had a chance to be able to tell you, uh, exactly how this particular set of circumstances are affecting them, uh, in terms of the air quality, uh, the fact that when they step outside, uh, they are surrounded by it, when they go inside their homes and turn on their air conditioning system, uh, the air ends up bringing in the pollutants, uh, inside, uh, and so relief is very hard to come by. Uh, many of these individuals also, uh, are suffering from health problems. Uh, we believe that they need, uh, to have some access to some information, uh, that can ensure, uh, that they know exactly how to effectively address their situation. Some of them, as you heard from Ms. Mimms on last week, uh, who are already asthmatics or having to deal with $300 refills when it comes to asthma medication, uh, and we believe that that is a situation, uh, that is, uh, quite chronic and quite widespread, uh, throughout the city. The other thing, I think, uh, Mr. Shine and councilmembers, that needs to be factored in as a part of the consideration of this thing, and in fact, it's a, uh, I think of something that, uh, represents one of those "duh" moments, uh, you know, once you really think about it. Uh, there's been a great deal of focus on the physical appearance, uh, of this, uh, the, the litter and the trash and the debris that leaves along Russell Road, uh, as Ms. Pharo referenced, how it appears, uh, as you travel down I-220. Uh, but I think it's also relevant, uh, to note, uh, that this is an area, uh, that, uh, to the best of my perception, appears to be within the watershed, uh, of our primary drinking source. Uh, as a young boy growing up on the Cooper Road, uh, sides of Russell Road used to flood every spring, uh, and we would, uh, crawfish, uh, in those waters, Mr. Jenkins, uh, with great regularity, uh, and, and bring home, literally, chestfuls, coolerfuls of crawfish. Uh, these are areas that we think, uh, are very much subject, uh, to the overflow of the Cross Lake area, when we open up those spill gates and that water flows out those gates and it goes under Hillary Huckabee Avenue, uh, and backs up into that area. Uh, and so, to that end, uh, we're pleased that now, in addition to, uh, the Department of Environmental Equality, which we believe, uh, has the duty and the responsibility to properly regulate, and if they cannot do that, they need to shut it down, uh, we've also asked that the Environmental Protection Agency, and now by extension, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, evaluate this situation, uh, for its wetland status, uh, so that, uh, if there are any implications, uh, for, uh, the possibility that what's there could leach into Cross Lake, uh, then as Pastor Holden just said, uh, it doesn't make it a, uh, a Cooper Road problem, doesn't make it an MLK problem, it makes it a Shreveport problem, and by extension, a Barksdale Air Force Base problem, since every drop of water that flows from their fountains comes from Cross Lake, uh, and from all those other surrounding water systems that we sell and supply water to as well. And so, um, we thank you all again for the unanimous resolution that you passed on last week. Uh, we thank you all for the positive reception that you've given to these three folks who have been engaged, uh, in this effort for years, and we ask that you all would stay focused as we go forward, uh, to try and ultimately, uh, bring it to some sort of a positive resolution. With that, I say thank you.
Before he leaves, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes.
I just want to commend Mayor Glover and the Glover administration, as well as my colleague, uh, Councilwoman McCullough and others for taking up the initiative to address this situation with the landfill. I, I do share your concerns, I do want, uh, the members of the community that was recognized here today to know that, I believe all of us share, uh, some very deep concerns about what is occurring there. I mean, all you have to do is pass by and see that it's something that just really is unacceptable, uh, to our city, and just know, uh, speaking for myself as a councilmember, I share that concern, we have my support in whatever we need to do to address, uh, landfill and the related issues that are there. And I certainly agree, it is a citywide, uh, situation there, it's not just restricted. I know the immediate effects on some people that live there in the area, but as you just addressed, the water supply, the air, and really the stigma that that kind of, uh, operation can bring to a city is a concern for all of us as city leaders. I just want to share that thought with you. Congratulations for, you know, taking it up and, and moving forward and doing what I feel to be, uh, taking what I feel to be, to be some very, uh, positive steps in making sure that, uh, the state and others know, we're not pleased with the condition there, something needs to be done.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Pastor, I look at it from the biblical standpoint that I am my brother's keeper. If I'm my brother's keeper, then I'm concerned. And, uh, I've known the three of you all for a long time, and, and matter of fact, uh, I guess I might be telling my age a little bit, but the mayor and I are about the same age, we're about 50, and, uh...
Continue your laughter.
Do you put that laughter in the minutes when you're checking them up? Or is that just...
Wait, wait, wait a minute. I believe you started off with your smile, but, uh...
I'm trying not to choke.
Right. I've taught a lot of the kids, uh, on the Cooper Road and at Fair Park, and, uh, one thing about it, uh, they had three of the top two to fight this, and, uh, and this is what we need, and you're right, this is a Shreveport problem. This is not just a problem on the, uh, Cooper Road, this is all of our problems. So, I'll be there tonight, and, and I think, uh, some of my other colleagues will be there tonight, and, and we're gonna make this a priority, and, uh, we're gonna see it all the way through, until it's closed down. God bless you, and thank you all for coming down here.
Thank you. Mr. Shine and councilmembers, I want to thank you all for those, those comments, and, and the one thing I would add to that, that you all will remember, that in November of last year, uh, this was the subject of an executive session, uh, that we had with you guys to, to brief you on the status of the lawsuits. Uh, I'm gonna have, uh, Terry Scott, uh, to prepare a brief, uh, for you all's consideration, because as we mentioned, the air quality, the water, um, but with four lawsuits, uh, some of which, uh, date back now for almost a decade, uh, we are racking up, uh, quite a bit of expense, uh, with regard to dealing with this situation, uh, and that again, uh, is something that makes it not just a Cooper Road problem, not just a, uh, an MLK problem, but a citywide problem. Um, and, uh, as we expressed in our communication, uh, to the governor, the one individual, the one place, the one point that can definitely give us some relief are the folks who issued them the permit in the first place, and so we hope that they will end up doing just that and giving us some relief. Thank you much, councilmember.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let me move to the council now, uh, communications from the council, uh, Councilman, let me, let me start with Councilman McCullough, you wanna, you wanna start first with any communications?
Oh, actually, I was just going to share that, um, District A, um, is honored to have Senator Greg Tover to, uh, meet with the district at 5:30 today at Southern University. Um, I think the newspaper indicated that it would be in the Jesse Stone Building, but the actual meeting is actually gonna be in Southern University's gymnasium regarding, uh, the landfill, the Harrelson landfill issue, and also DEQ is expected to be present as well. We invite everyone to come out as our supporters, uh, to help with this particular project. Thank you.
And Marvin, we're gonna be looking for you to be there tonight.
I might have another, well, we'll see.
Okay, okay, okay.
Sean, I need to...
Shine, I need to get Ms. Humphrey's first name.
Thelma.
Thelma Humphrey. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Webb.
Hi, everybody.
Jeff?
Just going to take this opportunity to recognize Lane Callaway from the Shreveport Historic Preservation Commission, but I will be happy to defer if we want to go through the rest of the councilmembers.
Please, and then, and then if you want to...
And then we can call him up then.
You can let him call, come up and kind of give us a...
That sounds wonderful.
Okay, Councilman Jenkins?
Which one?
None for me.
Oh, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to use this means to welcome to the city of Shreveport, the World Changers. That is a mission group that's sponsored by the Southern Baptist Convention and Lifeway, and they work here in the city of Shreveport, I believe, under the supervision of our Department of Community Development. These young missionaries come to the city each summer, and they go into various neighborhoods, and they work to paint and repair homes that are in the neighborhood. So, we just want to welcome them to the city of Shreveport, let them know how much we appreciate their work and their presence here. That's the World Changers, they come through each summer, missionary group of the Southern Baptist Convention and Lifeway, and once again, thank you to our Department of Community Development for your involvement in what I think to be a very worthwhile project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, Jeff, we ready for you in your desk.
Well, thank you. Lane, if you'd like to come up. Lane is the chairman of the Shreveport Historic Preservation Commission, and if y'all will recall, he came a few months ago to give us a set of priorities that they have for the year to come, and he's here to give us an update today. Lane?
Mr. Chairman, how you doing?
Fine.
Okay.
I am Lane Callaway, the chair of the Shreveport Historic Preservation Commission, and in November 2013, we had eight priorities that we started for 2014, and we give you an update, especially priority number one, which is completed. It's obtained a certified local government. Application was signed by the mayor. It went to Baton Rouge and happy to report, and the first staffing was good enough, was no discrepancies, no revisions, and it was approved by Baton Rouge. The mayor has it back as formative agreement, and Resolution 116, which you'd be considering, reinforces that, and I respectfully request that that indeed be considered and passed. Two weeks ago, I was in a statewide historic preservation meeting, talked with the shippo, and she is ready, once the mayor signs the agreement. She will also immediately send it to the Department of Interior for final approval. So, Shreveport will then become a certified local government, receive some of the benefits. As you know, and the council know, it's not this for the commission, this is for the city of Shreveport. It allows a lot of financing, grants to be opened up, training, technical assistance, also any nominations to the National Best of Historic Places comes through the commission then, once we become a certified local government. So, this is a big deal, and this is why it was our number-one priority. And kudos to Commissioner Slattery Johnson and our own ex-officio Dara Sanders, who put this together, and it was so perfect, again, the first time it staffed, it was approved by Baton Rouge.
And I have to just thank all of you on the commission, because this has been one of those groups, as everyone knows, the city of Shreveport was the largest city in Louisiana to not have a historic preservation code until we enacted one a couple of years ago, and so we had a lot of catching up to do, and this committee has come together and really put in a lot of work. They really have got us caught up quickly and to reach this point in the game on such a, when they told me they were almost ready to apply for their certified local government status, I said, "Really? I thought that'd be another year from now." But I'm delighted that they have moved forward as fast as they have. They're really working hard, and we appreciate the volunteer citizens who are serving their city so ably.
Also, I'd like to express a special thanks to you for working with the Christian Women United on seeking for the YWCA to become a Christian.
Two of them, two buildings, yes, ma'am.
Yes, two of them. I want to thank you for working with the Christian Women United group.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
Historic preservation is part of it, so...
Oh, yeah.
I'd just add one thing, I'm not sure they really knew what they were volunteering for when they started this whole thing, when we talked about it three or four years ago, when it was kind of, but I do appreciate all the hard work you guys have all put in, and like I say, I'm not sure everybody knew exactly how much effort it was going to take, but certainly, it isn't going unnoticed up here.
Thank you for your comments, and it's a team effort, but also, we realize that the commission is not an island isolated. We have great cooperation with the directors and deputy directors of different departments that impact, that have a piece of the historic preservation, and we have great communications with them, office calls with them, they've been to the sessions, and so we are gelling, and we are about to go, as you see from the priorities, giving you the update, we are going from organizing to operations.
Thank you.
Quickly here.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, unless you may go, the other priorities, I think you have the updates. It's up to your questions, ends my portion of briefing.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
I have one, and only because of a, I guess it was a zoning issue we had last week, two weeks ago on Thora, and just to give, and I should, you know, I realize that there are eight of these pages, and I got to the one that said South Island's historic district not started, and not saying it should be the top priority, I don't want to suggest it. I was just more saying, is there kind of a timeframe based on progress to date on your other things, when you think that'll be kind of next in the hopper, so to speak?
Yes, and that's priority three, we have begun the design review guidelines, and we got to do it for each historic district. Obviously, we started with downtown had been going on.
Sure.
Highlands, because it's the gateway to the city and has the most diverse collection of architectural designs in the city. Oakland has started, 800 Block in Texas, Fairfield and so forth, South Highlands, and so we have to take this piece by piece. We got to do it, we have one chance to get it right, because this, because it deals with property standards in the sense of the owners of historic properties and so forth, and this process, the design guidelines have to go through the Metropolitan Planning Commission, then to you for approval, so to make sure it's done right, and that's why we're taking our time. Mr. Trice, cut once on this.
And as a... No, no, and I'm not, and I'm not, I certainly don't want to send the message that I'm saying, get to it quick. I was just wondering, only because of conversations with the neighborhood...
I understand.
They're saying, was that, are we a year away, are we four years away? What kind of timeframe are...
I think I can answer that from recent conversations with some other commission members about this, is that, so the Highland one, which is going to be very helpful, as Lane said, it has the most diverse type of architecture in it, in that historic district, that'll be helpful, because those definitions and types of architectural elements will be sort of defined and ready to use in the other different districts where applicable, and it helps to get that structure and framework down. So, what I understand from the committee that's working on that one is that they're about 60% complete?
For that, for 60%, what we did, we tapped into the Highland Administration Association, and we have a work group, volunteers, and we're working with them as a bottom-up approach instead of a top-down. Now, for downtown, I'm working with Liz Rain, Director of DDA, for a top-down, because it's the way the property owners, but for the residents, the residential historic districts, bottom-up. It takes a bit longer, but I think we get more buy-in and also a better product. And as Councilman Jeff Everson said, Highland is the model, how we do it. So, I proceed the rest of them, before the end of the year, we will have started.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then they'll probably take a few months to...
Few months and so forth. And again, we have to get it through the system up to the council here, and also, we have the, you see here, the Unified Development Code coming online, and we are part of that, we're participating in that, we have to be conscious of that, make sure that historic preservation is tied in.
Okay.
So, it's a, maybe a little bit slow, but it's, I think that you get a better product and a better procedure.
Yeah, I'm not, I certainly am not saying I'm dissatisfied with the pace. I would just, you know, people ask, and because of the issue last week, they said, "Now, if we only had this, you know, we could use some of their guidelines." Really, neighborhood organizations are reluctant, I will say, to get too involved with somebody's personal property or make comments about it, because they want to be good neighbors.
True.
But if they had a guideline to kind of use as their umbrella to say, "Well, you know, we're all on board with this program, and this is where your proposal may not meet it," it would be a lot more diplomatic or easier to, you know...
And that's why I think approaching by bottom-up with the communities, with the neighborhood specifically for that historic district, those folks who own the property are there participating in the design.
Absolutely support the approach.
Thank you, sir.
I've been, I've been trying to tell Oliver that patience is a virtue.
Hey!
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, Oliver. All right, beautiful report, beautiful report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Be looking to see you come back again.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Farnell, please. Anybody have any questions pertaining to, pertaining to Ms. Farnell?
Just a quick thank you on my email, appreciate it. Got my email, thank you.
I have one here.
Okay. All right, Rose, did I see your hand?
Yeah, actually, I spoke with one of my constituents regarding the situation at 2037 Lemire Street. I know you said there was a citation issued and a warrant out for the young man's arrest, and of course, when I reported back to them, they wanted to know what next, you know, after, I mean, he didn't make his court date, so what happens beyond this point as far as his property?
We waited. When the police picks him up, a new court date will be set, and then we will then have it adjudicated in city court. We hope that will be real soon.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, one more, Jeff?
I don't, again, need an answer right now, but just the email I sent you earlier today was about a property that I know we've talked about before, and I know it's a legal thing, so I wanted to see where it was now, so you have an update?
I responded, and I...
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
One more, Ron?
Yes, Dorothy, give you some addresses, 3005 Hoyt, 8927 Marva, M-A-R-V-A, 842 Willow, 1814 Rosewood, and 1822 South Brookwood, care premises on all of them, and 1822, the backyard.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you all should have received electronically the copy of the latest self-tax report, as well as other revenue, although our report for this month is not as positive as it has been, it is still positive movement. Overall, for the year, we're still averaging 4.9%, and it includes a .5 for this past month. I will note, though, you should have gotten a copy of the breakdown by class, and if you look at it, auto sales took a huge, huge dip, as well as even though durable, non-durable goods wholesale remained in a positive situation, if you note, it's less than it was last month. So, I think the overall decline, we have some positive movement. The only sector that really flipped was motor vehicles, which had been positive so far this year, then in construction, it both kind of lessened, so we're at .5, we're still positive for the year, but, you know, the trend took a little dive from where it was for the past several months.
It was still good, though.
Very good.
I've got to say, compared to last year, compared to...
Exactly, and you figure car sales are going to come back, come back at some point here.
And, you know, things like this, ordinance 53, could help that construction amount back up, so if we can move forward with some of our projects, we may be able to help turn those numbers around ourselves.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Sibley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thompson, I've been informed that there is no public hearing.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
I was informed by Ms. Jackie over there that there would be no public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Jackie, for...
You're welcome.
Making me aware, because I realize you work right there in Mr. Thompson's office, and you are privy to all of the information. Bishy gets it before you do.
I know, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We're going to check in on that, you know. Mr. Thompson, any legislation, Mr. Thompson, to be added?
There's one item to be considered, Mr. Chairman. It's a resolution to recognize and thank the Coriam Allen Black Women's Honorarium Committee and the Nation of Islam Shreveport Study Group for using the legacy of Coriam Allen to motivate and inspire women and to otherwise provide respect there, too.
Wait, wait, y'all, give me a minute, and then I might ask Oliver to make the motion, pertaining to, since it's pertaining to black women.
Wow, yeah, oh, my God.
Is it anyone in here that would like to speak in opposition to the council adding that piece of legislation to the agenda? Is there anyone in here that would like to speak in favor? If not, Councilman Jenkins, I'll accept a motion from you.
No, I want my motion. I made the motion.
Be happy to second Rose's motion there.
Thank you.
But let me make this clear now, the chairman is running the meeting.
But I made the motion, councilman.
It doesn't matter.
You can't dictate who makes a motion.
Well, I can dictate on who I would accept the motion from. I want to make sure that...
I don't think so.
Now, now, if you want...
You haven't heard him make a motion.
Oh, wait, just a minute.
Let's move on to the next thing.
No, if you want me to accept the motion from Councilwoman McCullough, I will, but I'd like to have you to second on that.
Okay, I would be, first of all, I'd like to request that you accept Councilwoman McCullough's motion, and I'd be delighted to second it.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilwoman McCullough, it's been seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, that we would add this piece of legislation to the agenda. Now, do we have any questions? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, yes. This piece of legislation has been added with a six-oh vote, one out of the city.
I think you're going to find one out of the city.
I'm sorry, and one, Sam, we're going to wait until you vote.
I'm sorry, I've already published the vote.
Oh, you have?
Yes, sir, would you like to vote yea or nay?
On what?
We're adding legislation.
To the agenda.
What is legislation?
You know, we have to have everybody to, we have to have a yes from everybody in all that.
That's a yes for me.
That's right, that's right. Okay.
If she didn't want to, you might not have said it.
Ms. Irma Rogers, public comments, we're going to, we know that you want to get out of here and get to the meeting for this evening, and I want to bring you up now. We don't generally do that, Ms. Rogers, but I know you are a very important person, and you want to get to that important meeting this evening, and to have set it up.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Shine, Vice Chair, Mr. Everson, the mayor, Mr. Sibley, who are out, all of our city councilmen, and our city woman, City Councilwoman, Mrs. Rose Wilson McCullough. I come today first, I'd like to thank you for backing the resolution for the mayor's letter to go to Baton Rouge concerning the Harrelson materials management. It did bring about the provision of closing down that facility for some time. I think it was put out for a couple of months. It did start burning again last week. Commissioner did let me know that. At any rate, and I really appreciate you recognizing those individuals from our community who had a firsthand opportunity to try and stop this more than five years ago. Today, I come to reiterate some information from previous sessions, particularly February 25, 2014, when I addressed the council concerning streets issues, and May 20... and May 27, 2014, when I asked the council for some information, primarily because I have not received it. May 27, I asked for a timeline in writing. I came in in particular and mentioned Mrs. Melvina Pugh, whose husband had served this country and was a Purple Heart recipient. I explained to you at that time that she had severe drainage issues to the point that the insurance companies would not repair inside her home again because it was a recurring problem from the city's side. This past Saturday, they had Mrs. Melvina Pugh's funeral. This is the information that's disseminated within our community to let us know when someone is deceased within University Village. That's why I'm here again to request information in writing that would help alleviate this. If it will assist you, one of our community neighbors, when we were disseminating this information and speaking about the drainage problems that she had reoccurring and reoccurring, is willing to speak with the city engineers to talk about where some of these floodwaters, where some of these floodwaters may come from. I really am asking this council to get us some information. We've given all the information we possibly can give you on the many targeted streets. I brought slides in February, but I particularly mentioned Ms. Pugh's name in May. So I'm asking you again, please give us something in writing, something I can take back to our board and my board members, who were here, more than 20 of them, in February on this very issue.
Ms. Rogers, I'm going to refer that to Mr. Dale Sibley. I don't see him over there right now, but...
He'll be back in.
He just walked through.
Right, but I don't see him over there right now.
We had one of the...
He would be responsible for getting you information from the city engineering department, and then getting in contact with your councilperson there, Ms. Rose McCullough.
May I address that?
Sure, but Mr. Sibley will be the contact person that you really need, yes.
As far as the request in writing, I'm sure the engineering department can provide that. But in my communication with the engineering department, the street that Ms. Pugh lives on is a part of the asphalt overlay program. It's my understanding that when they're going in to repair the streets, the reconstruction of all of this is going to take place. So it is on the agenda to be, to address.
Okay, the drainage issue is behind the home. It's not, it's not coming from the street, I don't believe. That's why I want the study. I don't think it's coming from right there, it's behind. Between Roy Road and Harry Huckleberry, there's like a small bayou, a covert area that's open back there.
Right.
That's part of the problem. But if they will address it when they do that, that's fine, it's just that we want to leave it this...
That's what we've been doing with the other streets that we're recon, you know, that we're reconstructing.
As long as we have some kind of communication, because we were promised in February. I've spoken with Mr. Jeff Everson, and I will attend the meeting that he will set up for us. We've not had that meeting.
What meeting?
It was from February, that there was to be a meeting. Concerned the streets at that time, when we were asking how much is appropriated for the MLK area, and we were asking for whatever help we could get with the many streets on the slide.
So we've spoken a number of times since, and I've provided you some information. That wasn't the information you were looking for?
No, not, not, no. We talked about some other, I think we talked about civic appropriation.
About what information we're looking for then.
Okay.
So why don't you give me another call, and I'll get you some additional information, and we'll make sure it's the specific information that you need.
Okay.
Also, Ms. Rogers, while you're here, you know, there was a request from the community in regards to the minor ulteriors, the streets that you all had requested to be identified as minor ulteriors. Well, actually, I've spoken with Robert Westerman since then, and so the issue is being addressed at this particular time, but he said and suggested that it might be better if we wait until school starts to actually get a traffic, you know, an accurate traffic quote account of the traffic that's actually coming through each day. So I agreed with him on that, and I just wanted you to know that he's still working on getting those streets identified as minor ulteriors as well.
That's the resolution to the state?
Right.
DOTD?
Right.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Sibley?
Yes, sir.
She has made a couple of requests, and, you know, basically, the way this government works, the CEO and the mayor runs, and the information that she needs really would be information that you, the mayor, want, because...
I can follow with Ms. Rogers and Ms. McCullough.
Right.
I have Ms. Rogers's numbers, and I'll give her a call and get the details. We'll take care of it.
Please do. All right.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Shine?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers, before you go, I think in relation to your question, in relation to your question, I think a good starting point would be the list of streets that we prepared as an administration, going back to 2011, in the period after the passage of the bond issue. The list of streets that were compiled for the Fixed Report Streets Now initiative would be a good starting point in terms of knowing, both in terms of the staff's assessment over the course of the years, as well as feedback that we have gotten from neighborhood leaders, citizens, complaints, and what have you. And as I recollect, that listing was broken down by council district. And so in terms of what at that point, three years ago, would have been identified as the streets in the highest need of concern for the entirety of District 8 would be compiled in that, as you and I spoke just the other day, that was what dawned on me, would be a good starting place in terms of that. I know that the councilwoman has kept that listing over the last three years, and I know staff, Robert is shaking his head. I would suggest that we start by getting you a list of those streets specific to District 8. You can also identify which of those would fall within the MLK area, the Cooper Road area. The one thing that I do remember in terms of that listing was that the number for District 8 was considerable. And in asking staff, and obviously, I had an idea, but I wanted to hear from them, why it is that there was such a significant number of streets, and that the dollar amount was rather considerable. Several things, one, that the streets within the district were among some of the worst in the city because of the lack of maintenance, upkeep, and repair over the years, and then that two, geographically, because of the population shift out of District 8 over the last several decades, as it's gone through its successive reapportionment processes since the 1980s coming forward, in order to be able to stay at the same approximate population number as the other six districts, and geographically, the district has gotten larger. And so, based upon those two considerations, but I think we should start with that listing, review it, and then go back and update from there. Review and see how much in terms of some of the interim work that's been done with some of the additional street money that's been added, of those that have come off of that list, and to see which ones that may need to go on. We know from our tour back in April that you still got the Kelseys, the Audrey Lanes, the David Rains, the Jones, maybe, the Jamison's that are, that are still in need of considerable attention.
And Mr. Mayor, she was also talking about some drainage.
Yes.
I believe, you want to, you want to make a comment on that?
Yes, sir, and if I'm, if I would assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that would be drainage specifically related to the University Park area and around...
University Village.
University, that part of that drainage, Mr. Shine, was included within some of the anticipated street and repair work. You know from your years that street and drainage kind of go hand in hand, kind of like peanut butter and jelly, as you, as you improve in the streets. One of the considerations is making sure that as you improve your streets, that you're also facilitating proper drainage as well. And I know that with several of those, they were a combination of both street and drainage projects included.
That was a thing that she was mainly concerned about.
Yeah, primary, that we don't want to forget the streets.
Right, well, that's going, that's always a priority.
And, 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 you have a copy of, you have a list of those streets, because I actually distributed over 500 copies in the district. The listing of the prioritized streets per district?
After all the meetings we had, the quarterly meetings and so forth, yes.
That's the list that the mayor is referencing.
Okay.
All right.
But I get it from Mr. Sibley.
Ms. Rogers, thank you, we don't generally do that, but I just want to let you know you're special.
I certainly appreciate it, it's just that after she passed away, I had to come back and just let you know that...
Thank you.
Our citizens are passing away, and we still haven't fixed our problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sibley, I don't believe we have any appointments to consider today, do we?
That's correct, Mr. Shine.
Okay. Mr. Thompson? We are back in your hands, which are like all state.
We have no items under Section 8, we're under Section 9, regular agenda legislation, resolutions are second reading and final passage, which will require only one reading, number 111. Resolution 111 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus.
What's the pleasure? It's been moved by Councilman Everson, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. I want to make sure I get this right now, because...
Do we need to go back to the younger and the older?
No.
Because it's still not clear.
Well, well, Sam say no, so. Any questions and discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. It passes with a six oh vote, one out of the city.
112 declares certain adjudicated properties to be surplus, which will authorize the mayor to sell the city of Shreveport's tax interests in these adjudicated properties.
What's the pleasure?
So move, second.
Been moved by Councilman Sam Jenkins, and seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, nay. This passes with a six oh vote, one out of the chamber.
113 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 on July 17, 2014, relative to dispensing sale and/or consumption of alcoholic beverages in the 400 block of Lake Street for the grand opening block party.
It's been the pleasure by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Oliver, I mean, Sam Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not...
It's going to be a great party.
It's great to see five businesses open at once, that's a very positive sign.
There will be no alcohol there, will it?
There may be some. I'm assuming that's why we're discussing it.
Dale?
It's a different chapter 10. I believe it will be well monitored and maintained, so.
The mayor can tell you, you know, we, 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 good Christians sometimes, you know, have a little reluctance about voting for drinks that are stronger than Pepsi Colas and Coca Colas. All in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. It passes with a six oh vote, one out of the, out of the city, really.
114, a man's resolution number 91 of 2012, to authorize expenditure of citywide improvement program funds to include the design work for the 1600 block of Oakdale and extends to the cul-de-sac and otherwise provided with respect there.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. This piece of legislation passes with a six oh vote, one out of the city.
Mr. Shine, there was one add-on, it's a resolution to recognize and thank the Cora M. Allen Black Women's Honorarium Committee and the Nation of Islam Street Boy Study Group for using the legacy of Cora M. Allen to motivate and inspire women and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
I'll accept a motion from Councilwoman McCullough, and I thought I was going to get a second from Councilman Ron Webb, but I guess he's a little slow on it, second for Councilman... Yeah, Jeff Everson, all in favor? Vote yes, opposed, no. This piece of legislation passes with a... Where did Oliver go?
He had to step out of that.
Marvin, make that notation here.
He expressed his support, but he had to step out.
Oh, Oliver stepped out.
As a matter of fact, he gave him a second.
Okay, well, that's great, then. There you go. There you go, don't let him get away. That's a five oh vote, one out of the chamber, and one out of the city.
Mr. Chairman, we're now into introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 22, 2014. 115 authorizes the acceptance of a donation from Wells Fargo Premier Asset Services and otherwise provides with respect thereto. 116 authorizes execution of certification agreement with Louisiana, with the State of Louisiana Department of Culture, Recreation, and Tourism.
What is the pleasure, counsel?
So move for introduction.
It's been moved, introduction by Councilman Jeff Everson, been seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. All in favor? Unless you have some questions, comments? If not, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. Oliver, Marvin did make a notation that you stepped out on the previous vote, but he said he would be talking to you.
Okay. Please, please make him realize that, I didn't realize when it was getting added on. So, I mean, I'd have been in here had I known that's when it was coming in.
Okay. But you did say that you were contacting for a little sponsorship, there you go. He has a lot of all money. And you know, that doesn't run out, does it, Dale? All money doesn't run out, does it?
That's what I heard.
That industry has a lot of...
You said that's what you heard, though. All right. Introduction passes with a six oh vote, one out of the city. It will lay over for two weeks. At that time, it may or may not be acted upon. Thank you, B., for agreeing with me.
Chairman, we're now into introduction of ordinances. There are two not to be adopted prior to July 22, and one not to be adopted prior to August 12. They are as follows, number 70 declares the city's interest in certain vacant properties as surplus, and our intention to donate certain vacant lots acquired by community development for Phase 3 of Concordia Place Development to Fuller Center for housing of Northwest Louisiana Inc. Number 71, a man's ordinance, number 150 of 2013, which amended and reenacted 7010-172 of the Code of Ordinances. Number 72 declares the city's interest in certain vacant properties as surplus, and our intention to donate certain vacant property acquired by community development via foreclosure to Hope for the Homeless Inc.
What is the pleasure?
So, yes.
Been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson for introduction, was that Councilman Sam Jenkins?
Oliver.
Oliver Jenkins, I'm sorry. You all sound so much alike, that, that, that New England accent that both of you all have.
That is interesting.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? If not, let's vote. The introduction has been introduced, the legislation with a six oh vote, one out of the city. Thank you, Mr. ...
Mr. Chairman, we're now into ordinances on second reading and final passage. Number 53 amends the 2014 capital improvements budget and otherwise provides with respect thereto. There is one amendment. The amendment substitutes a new fact sheet and ordinance and makes certain changes to both the fact sheet and the ordinance, so that the decreases and increases will balance.
What's the pleasure?
Would you like to move for the amendment?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson on the amendment, and it's been seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Oliver, I'm glad you pointed over that, because I get confused sometimes with those accents. You ready? Both of you all sound so much alike. Okay, the amendment passes with a six oh vote, one out of the city.
And then, there was some discussion from the administration yesterday about one, asking that we might postpone this one more meeting?
If you would, if you would, yes.
I'm comfortable with...
So I appreciate it.
And I'm comfortable with that, you know, we've taken a while making sure that this all gets, gets in line and works well, and we just want to make sure we have everything... A second.
It's been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson to postpone, been seconded by Councilman Ron Webb. Any more questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, vote yes. Legislation has been amended and postponed with a six oh vote. I didn't, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Jeff here. Dale, I'm looking at Jeff's new haircut, and I forgot to... new haircut and I forgot to vote. Yeah. Make him look like a schoolboy.
I'm trying to feel younger again.
All right. It's six oh vote, one out of the city.
Uh, number 64 authorizes a mayor to execute all necessary legal instruments to effect the exchange of certain immovable property owned by the city of Shreveport for certain immovable property owned by Louisiana CVS Pharmacy LLC, repealing ordinance number 35 of 2014 and otherwise providing with respect there too.
What's the pleasure?
To move.
Been moved by Councilman Ron Webb, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins this time. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no. This piece of legislation passes with a six oh vote, one out of the city.
Number 66 authorizes an amendment to the agreement and lease with MBI Global LLC. The administration asked that this be tabled.
To move to table.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins to table, been seconded by Councilman Rose McCullough. Any questions or discussion? Uh, administration, did you all have a reason for this, uh?
Uh, yes, Mr. Shine, as we referenced yesterday during the work session, uh, as you all know, in order to be able to effectively amend a lease of this nature, it requires by statute, uh, three readings. Um, there is still some potential, uh, that with the new entity, uh, that is working in joint venture with the folks from MBI, that we might be able to execute an actual new lease agreement with the new Module X folks, uh, if that is possible, uh, in an effort to be able to allow the city, uh, to move, uh, in a more expeditious fashion, uh, as is often said, to move at the speed of business, uh, than to have this particular measure, already having gone through three readings, waiting on the council agenda, uh, on the table on the council agenda, would give us the ability to be able to move, uh, as soon as the council would be briefed, uh, be in agreement with the, uh, the terms of a proposed lease and have a meeting that would allow the, the measure to be removed from the table and then voted upon. So, uh, it should give us the ability to be able to move, uh, and move quickly if necessary.
I'm glad you said that. We have Sammy sitting out there. I know he's wondering why we want to table this piece of legislation, and now he knows, Mr. Mayor.
He quizzed me about the very same thing this past Fourth of July.
There you go. All right. All in favor of table this piece of legislation? Please vote. It's been tabled with a six oh vote, one out of the city.
Uh, number 67 amends the 2014 general fund budget appropriating the funds authorized therein and to otherwise provide with respect there too. This concerns a street sweep program, and I believe there was some discussion of postponing it.
That would be the request from the administration. Absolutely. We, uh, we want to be in a position to make sure that, that, that all of the questions have been answered. Stan Harris in Public Works has been our lead in terms of planning and coordinating. There are also some additional questions that have been raised about, uh, dialogue back and forth with Shreveport Green and some others. We want to make sure that, uh, you know, uh, everybody hopefully will, will be on the same page, uh, in terms of what we do and we get a chance to, to go forward.
It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins and seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins.
To postpone.
To postpone. And Rose, we're gonna make sure that when they get the street sweeper, that it doesn't start off in Councilman Oliver Jenkins' district first. It'll be either yours or mine.
He won't mind. He won't mind.
Okay. I do have a request, but let's finish the vote.
Yeah, let's vote first. Okay. Been, uh, postponed with a six oh vote, one out of the city.
And this is more a question for the head of the Infrastructure Committee, because I guess I'm gonna just assume this falls under the Infrastructure Committee.
Sure, we can take it on if need be, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think of one that would be, I mean, is maintaining infrastructure.
Seems appropriate.
Okay, my request would be if we could organize it in the latter stage of next week or Monday, to have just a discussion about, I mean, Monday before council, two weeks' time, et cetera. If we can have an infrastructure meeting to just go over this one, because it'd be hard to have the dialogue out here and have questions. Just, if that's possible, as a chair, if you, and if, I'm assuming the administration's happy to support that.
I'll get with, uh, Jackie and, and, um, and, uh, see if we can't schedule that for sometime next week or later this week.
For me, it's better the end of next week or the following week.
Let's do it, let's do it Monday.
In the next week is fine.
Let's do it Monday before, uh, the work session.
We can do that, too. We'll look and see what's available and when the room's available, and, um, we'll shoot for that Monday or that Friday before.
And Dale, if it's not available, Dale can make it available. We won't have no problem there.
I may need to look at my schedule as well. But, um, but we will schedule something.
You got my suggestion, just to make sure we can get out there.
Absolutely.
Uh, Ron and I might be out of town.
Yep.
Yeah, this is, this is, uh.
Going to French Riviera again, I'm assuming.
What, no, this is time we go to Hot Springs and take us some of those good hot mineral baths. Okay, uh, Mr. Thompson?
Number 68 amends and replaces ordinance number 106 of 2012, a year intersection to a stop intersection.
What's the pleasure?
Hello?
Been moved by Councilwoman McCullough, seconded by.
Sam Jenkins.
Uh, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Any discussions? If not, all in favor vote yea, opposed is nay. This piece of legislation passes with a six oh vote, one out of the city.
Number 69 amends the 2014 capital improvements budget. Uh, this concerns an existing utility project, a port lift station.
To move.
Been moved by Councilman Jeff Everson, seconded by Councilwoman Rose McCullough. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposed is nay. This piece of legislation passes with a six oh vote, one out of the city.
Mr. Shine, those are all of the items that we have on the agenda for consideration today. I'm not aware of any item to be removed from the table.
Let me, let me ask, uh, any council member have any piece of legislation to be removed from, uh, the table? If not, Mr. Thompson, we will, we have no, at this point, we have no property standards appeals for today.
Uh, that's correct. We have no ABO or other appeals, MPC appeals, or taxi, or SOB appeals today.
Wow, you think it's, uh, because people might be on vacation?
They're trying to work out the problems, Mr. Shine.
Oh, okay.
New spirit of compromising this time.
Ah, that's what we, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait a minute, Oliver.
Something happened.
Dale, did you, did you hear that? I hope that didn't stick on the mayor, did it?
I don't think so.
Mayor, look on your shoulders and see whether it stuck on your shoulders or not.
What, what is the, uh, the Bible reference I invoked yesterday? Brothers, let us come together and reason?
Together.
Together?
Wow!
Is that Isaiah?
Pastor Mays, you see that? We got some Bible students up here. Yeah. All right. All right.
Necessary, how pastor.
Dale, you see, we making some progress.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Man, that sounds, that sound good. Okay, uh.
We're now under reports from officers, boards and committees.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes.
Uh, I'd like to schedule Audit and Finance Committee meeting for Monday, August 11th, at 2:00. That'll be, uh, an hour before our, uh, work session. Representatives from BKD will be there to discuss the results of the city's 2013 external audit. Members of the committee are council members McCullough, Carbin and Everson. So, I'm asking that you please check your schedule for Monday.
Monday.
August 11th at 2:00 PM. I think we've confirmed that time with the representatives from BKD. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilman Sam Jenkins, that was an excellent report.
What time, Sam?
2:00.
2:00.
Okay, anybody else? Any, any, any other?
Uh, Councilman Shine, can I, can I request a report from Attorney Scott at this time regarding the demolition of the funeral home? I spoke with her yesterday.
On Patterson, the Patterson funeral home?
The Patterson's funeral home.
If she doesn't mind, if she doesn't mind coming up and.
We've had several citizens to call, uh, you know, reporting that this is an eyesore to the community, and, uh, I requested from her to just give an update today for the sake of, uh, you know, those that are watching by way of TV media.
Ms., uh, uh, Ms. Scott, you look very summertime-ish and very cool today.
Yes.
Um, Ms. McCullough, members of the council, uh, what we can update you about is today, uh, we did a search on the federal court's website to determine the status of the litigation that we referred to yesterday, which was a bankruptcy. Uh, the matter is still in bankruptcy, but there was an order that has been signed by the bankruptcy court granting the trustee the authority to sell the property, um, up on North Hearn Street that has been burned by the fire. That is the subject of the property standards demolition order, to sell the property at public auction on July 12th. I've got a call in to the bankruptcy trustee now, you and I've been missing each other, to find out the effect of that order on our ability to execute on the property standards order to demolish the property. I spoke with Ms. Farnell a couple of minutes ago to ask, to get an update about what happened at the meeting. I believe it was a business association meeting that was held today.
Shreveport Business Association.
And she, Dorothy commented to me that, uh, she was told during the meeting that the sale that's referenced in the, um, order that I just spoke about, that the sale is not going to take place on July 12th, but it's been rescheduled for sometime in August. I'm not aware of that, and so my comment was to Dorothy that we will attempt to confirm that when we speak with the bankruptcy trustee as to the actual date of the public auction for the property, but at any rate, the property is scheduled for public auction pursuant to the bankruptcy. And until we get information to the contrary from the bankruptcy trustee, my recommendation is that we do not execute on the property standards board order to demolish the property, since that property is still the subject of that bankruptcy.
Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, that's all of the reports, sir. Yes, sir.
While Ms. Scott is still standing.
Yeah.
As she would, since I know it was part of the discussion at the previous meeting.
Yeah.
Could you also give a, a quick update on the status of the information requests that have come in from the financial one through to the.
Uh, we responded to, uh, that request, and the requesting party, through his attorney, actually picked up the information from us. I don't recall if it was last Wednesday or last Thursday, but we have responded, provided the information that we had that was responsive to the request, so that request is satisfied.
Okay, that, that sounds, that sounds pretty good to me. I don't know about these other council people.
Well, I'm not a practicing attorney like you, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, Oliver. Uh, please track that from the records.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what the jury just said. Please track that from the records. Okay, uh, I'll accept a motion at this time for the council to resolve, excepting to a committee of the whole. It's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Uh, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no. We are now into the committee of a whole by six oh vote, one out of the, uh, city. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Second.
Been, uh, moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins and seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins for the approval of the minutes on June 24th, 2014. Uh, any questions or corrections? If not, all in favor vote yes, opposed is no. The minutes have been.
Councilman Everson?
Approved with a six oh vote. Um, the mayor is standing in the back of the chamber. You have any more remarks, Mr. Mayor? We getting ready for the meeting this evening.
We, we have none, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Councilman Shine, if you would allow me to announce it once again.
When I get these over here.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, communication from council members. Now, we will start off with Councilwoman Rose McCullough.
I just wanted to announce once again, uh, that, uh, within the district at Southern University at, starting at 5:30, um, our state senator, Senator Greg Tarver, will be present with, uh, the, um, DEQ from Baton Rouge, Louisiana. We're asking that, uh, not only the citizens of the MLK area, but the citizens throughout the city of Shreveport, if you would come and join us at this meeting today, starting at 5:30, in the gymnasium. The newspaper this morning indicated that it was in the Jesse Stone Building. It has been moved from the Jesse Stone Building to the gymnasium, so we welcome you and we need your support. Thank you.
Uh, a little footnote on that. Mr. Willie Bradford will also be a part of that, uh, meeting. Okay, Ron?
I'm gonna ask to leave a little early so I can go ahead and be there to greet all of the friends and visitors and citizens.
Please, why don't you, why don't you, uh, exit right now?
Thank you so kindly.
Oliver, is that all right?
That's.
Wait, wait, hold on just a minute, Rose. Wait just a minute. Oliver, is that all right?
As I'm in charge of attendance today.
Yeah.
It's okay with you.
Okay, thank you so kindly.
Okay, uh.
I have a request.
Okay, let me see. Ron?
I have nothing.
Okay. Jeff?
I am good.
Okay, Oliver.
Um, more information or something from Charles, if he's in here. I'm not sure y'all are aware, and it hasn't gotten much attention, but, um, the treasurer, the state treasurer is having a meeting on Wednesday about disclosures of cities and unfunded liability as it affects bond ratings.
That.
In the past, we haven't, there hasn't been a requirement necessarily to put that as part of your bond rating. And the federal government, I guess, has come in and given some kind of a grace period for states and municipalities maybe to do so with the SEC. Not exactly sure I understand everything about where this requirement emanates from, um, but the treasurer was here today, so I spoke briefly to him about it. And so my real request or suggestion is to find out what the substance of this meeting is for the 15th in Baton Rouge, and if some kind of a, I'll call it a disclosure opportunity to, not that anybody's withholding that information, nobody, it's never been necessarily a requirement, and, um, and kind of find out what the process it is for us. And they say it involves even bonds all the way, anybody that's, uh, issued any bonds between 2009 and present. Now, there were some suggesting moving back 10 years, but I think this current proposal is in five years. So, it's really more information, and if y'all haven't gotten any reports about this change or procedure, it's just what I got in the last two days.
Well, uh, before Charles speak, I know at the most recent, uh, GFOA conference and HR conference, actually, when we talked about it, we did get information in terms of how the rating agencies will plug in the, uh, the unfunded liability, uh, as a part of their formula in terms of determining your ratings, so we do have information on that. We are tracking that. But Charles, in terms of this new disclosure reporting requirement to the SEC, Oliver, is what you said?
Yes, I mean, it is.
I'll defer to Charles. I have not heard.
It's a disclosure issue at this point. It is not a procedural issue or of a disclosure. So, basically, I just recommend giving a call down to his office and find out if there's a role for us to, do we need to have somebody in attendance or, you know, and what the next steps are for us.
Okay, I'm not sure what you're talking about there. I know, starting for fiscal years ending after this year, that is, has to be part of our CAFER from now on, reported a totally different way than it is now. So, I don't know.
But I don't believe this is not, I mean.
It does sound a little different.
But it's really not, because it has to do with disclosures in terms of bonds and indebtedness, and they feel that maybe governments have underreported their outstanding debt as a function of bond issuance, not necessarily intentionally, just doing so because they didn't show unfunded liabilities. And so the discussion centers around, I believe, of what cities need to disclose currently and/or in the future in terms of bond issuance.
We'll check on it. We'll brief you that.
Is this something the treasurer is doing?
It's really the treasurer's office, so that's where you need to go in terms of, that's the host of this meeting, as I understand.
Okay.
We'll track it. Thanks, Charles. Uh, Marvin, tea, public comment, and not trying to rush you, but we want to get to your next meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Shine. I'm gonna try to be succinct as possible, because it's about 30 minutes before that next meeting.
Right.
Uh, but I do have two quick points. We do want to, uh, say something, uh, concerning Harrison. Uh, we will, the Nation of Islam and the Coalition of, of MLK citizens of We will, the Nation of Islam and the Coalition of M A K citizens against environmental injustice, they will be having a protest rally at eleven oh one Russell Road that's scheduled for July nineteenth. That's a Saturday, Chairman Shine, so if you want to come out, you know, bring your shades and your cap. Keep the sun out of your face, and we're going to be out there demonstrating for what we believe is environmental injustice and racism. With that being said, I key no speaker for Cora M. Allen on the River Banquet that's going to be held on that same night, that Saturday. He will be also in the M L K area on that Sunday. We'll be dealing with specifically Michael Harrison and the Harrison landfill issue, and of course, the public is also invited to be there as well for that. That should, and we actually wrapping up the details right now with the venue and the time, but right now, it should be Southern University, ten A M, and that'd be that proceeding Sunday. With that being said, again, I want to thank Councilwoman Rose McCullough. She really pushed me towards really, if you will, recognizing Cora M. Allen and attaching her name to the banquet that we felt like was necessary to really uplift and pause for a moment and reflect, and then, of course, respect and then honor many of our sisters today that go so long of being unrecognized. And I wish Mr. Thompson would have had the opportunity, although we appreciate the first, the quick first and second, we really wanted that resolution to be recorded in the minutes, although I do know with the mayor's Women's Commission that he has done things in the past with the Texas Avenue Community Association and whatnot and others. We appreciate their work, and also with them branding their name, I think it's called the Calantrian.
Calantrian Temple.
No, not the Calantrian Temple, but.
The old gay society that she founded.
No, 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 no. The Texas Avenue Community Association, I think they coined the term Calantrian Valley or something.
Calantrian Canyon.
Yeah, Calantrian, yeah, thank you, Councilman Everson, yeah. So, we really want to brand that, and what's important, the mayor said earlier when he was speaking about women in general, that when you want to get something done, give it to women. But in truth, the real and true measure of a people is through their woman, not the man. And the Most Honorable Elijah Muhammad teaches us that a nation can rise no higher than its woman. And so, although we have women in the city of Shreveport, black women particularly in the city of Shreveport, that has risen above conditions of pass, you know, we have a wonderful city attorney, Terry Scott, we have an assistant C E O, Chirica Fields, we have, of course, our councilwoman, Rose McCullough, and others that works in city government as well. So, again, we want to thank the council for their support, and I will, and this is to Councilman Shine, this is to you as well. We will, we will be sending out an email for those sponsorships again. So, again, thank you for your support as we head on to the M L K and Senator Greg Tarver.
Thank you for making it short and make sure you don't leave a good friend.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The resolution will be a part of the minutes. It will be printed and full in the minutes.
Okay. Pastor Mays, I know you want to go with Marvin T. up to the meeting, so come on up next. Marvin, wait just a minute. Pastor Mays is going to go with you up to the meeting.
To the chair.
And I hope you all be there when I get there.
Yes, to the chair and to the vice chair and to all the council members. Thank you for your service, first of all. As important as the issue from which we're going to address this afternoon with Greg Tarver and others, there's also an issue that is equally important, and that is the issue that most don't like to talk about on this particular council, but I feel that it's necessary to bring this up, and it's in relation to our financial advisor and what it's going to take to move the city forward, Councilman Shine. I know that each person on this council has a responsibility to the citizens of this city to make choices and to lead by example. There are some people that have given me a call in regards to not being able to come down and feeling intimidated because they feel that they don't have a voice to come to the podium unless they are time-constricted. Now, we know the council has the privilege to do as the council do, and we respect that, but we don't want anyone to feel at any time that they don't have a right as a human being to come down and to voice their opinion without them feeling intimidated, because that's what this podium is for. And as I'm saying to you guys, I don't understand why is it, as I spoke to the media just recently, why is it so hard to work with an individual that has kept this city literally from falling into bankruptcy? And Councilman Shine, you know me and you have been longtime friends, and we are still friends, but I just think, and I know that you have made decisions that it's best to move this city forward, you're one of the pioneers, that helped get us where we at now. So, I just feel that it's necessary that as a council, that it's time to move the city forward by getting Grigsby, I called each one of your council members and spoke to you personally and voiced my concerns to you as well about moving this situation forward. There is nothing, and I spoke to the media and let them know, there is nothing, no proof, no evidence, that can validate that Mr. Grigsby overcharged the city fifty-three thousand dollars or more. And I know this is a touching situation, and personal feelings get involved, and people say things sometimes that they shouldn't say. But the fact of the matter is, Councilman Jenkins and others, the fact of the matter is, is that every council person that sits in that seat was chosen.